About the right. You don't tell them why you're doing it.
And the decisions that have been made. Perhaps we tackle a less important one, Stormwater.
Stormwater is a flat rate, you guys. That's not a good storm. But we do have people in this town that don't live in this and pay for it at all.
We can come back to that.
Right.
Stormwater. So if we were to. I've been nine years in Delaware, um, this is kind of where we stand. Come on. Seven seventy-five. So if we go back to the five percent increase, we're looking from seven seventy-five to eight fourteen.
What if we just hang up that one? So, hold on, hold on. I just want to give you another forecast, two percent here. Eventually, every stormwater pond in this town. At one point or another, it'll have to get dredged out. And your tax is one thirty thousand dollars, if not more, a pond, and there's like twenty-nine of them.
So.
So.
Here, well, let's look at it this way. So from this kind of perspective, this budget number is our expenditures that we're expecting in twenty twenty-five. Okay? This is our estimated revenue. I just stuck the current rate in there.
I thought it was seven seventy-five.
Yes, it's seven, if you stay at seven seventy-five, this is gonna be your projected revenue. You're gonna fall thirty-one thousand dollars short.
Perfect.
Okay? If you go up to eight fourteen, you're at one forty-seven. We're still not there. Even at eight fifty-three, we're getting closer, but we're still not there. So what you give that is an idea. So if we increase it partially, uh, we need to get us closer so that we're not at a deficit.
Is that pretty close budget with the last few years?
Yeah, that is.
So we've been running at a deficit.
From what I can tell. Wendy always said that Stormwater, don't be paying for it, he doesn't. He can get caught.
But I'd rather not have such a large deficit. Looking back at twenty-two. And eighty-six thousand revenue.
I don't know what the expenditures for that year.
I'm just gonna go at twelve seventy-two. Don't go where that way there.
Um, gosh, I thought this was gonna be your one again, not. Um. Try. Any thoughts on this one? I mean.
Twelve seventy-nine percent.
Increase of that in there? Mm-hmm. It's about seven. Yeah. Seven percent?
Oh, like random numbers.
Round up to eight thirty?
No, I think round out to eight twenty-five and sell fifty cents. Better than my. For my head.
You'd be a rapper, huh?
Um.
They're just saying straight fifty-ten increase.
Seven increase?
That's what I'm saying. Stay fifty-ten increase, go to eight twenty-five.
That's fine.
I like.
Perfect. I love it. So how about let's do. Didn't have not much to take from here on in this one. It was hard to find the numbers. Um. A straight and then permanent balancing. So. Yeah, I was looking at that for the commission and they don't like publish their results. And I asked somebody on the commission, or I think there's like some drama or.
There's a disconnect between the relatives here.
Yeah. Um. So waste water, um, at a five percent increase, from six oh five to six thirty-six. And then the unit rate is about fifty-five. You're looking about a dollar fifty. At a five percent increase. Um, so this one is better. Obviously, these are what we're expecting in expenditures for twenty twenty-five, based on these rates staying the same, jumping five percent. Um, we're obviously doing. Okay, do you want to go back to water source?
Go back to sewer, go back to sewer and get that one done.
Sewer did.
I thought we were gonna hit home water, so.
No, it's a re.
Okay. This is just, I didn't want to mess it up. Nine dollars on the base rate, and just, the unit rate, I think, is where.
The unit rate is the unit rate.
Yes, that's right. So. Go from nine to, like, the mayor mentioned, you know, do that dollar five increase, dollar five increase, or just go straight to that seven forty-one?
Can I just go? I, I get that I'm an in-between person on this one, but can we just go to matching about the water unit rate? It's a little more than half, but in a way, we're at least even. I get that that was the concern, that we're under what the water was, but.
See, you're only going to the twelve sixty.
I was talking about the unit rate. We're not talking about the nine dollars, okay? Leave the nine dollars alone, yeah.
So we're on, yeah, we're on the unit rate. So we're okay with the nine?
Yep.
Okay. We're talking about the unit rate. And where do you want them?
Just even with what the water.
Okay, fifty-six.
Yeah.
It's not all the way there, but I. I just don't have a good feeling about jumping everything all at once. We're jumping four categories, but one of them by fifty-ten, but three of the categories by.
Type in six fifty-six on that one, and see what it jumps to as far as the total increase. We're talking. A few dollars.
Five dollars.
Five dollars. But we're gonna have that much less of people complaining about their water bill going up because it's five dollars more. And more prepared for what's up now. Or are we gonna hear the same amount? That five dollars more?
You might hear the same amount complaining no matter what.
I don't think, I don't think any guy's gonna hear what Amy and Chris are gonna hear.
No.
Like, say that.
City's gonna hear.
Look, let's be real. I mean, actually, you gotta get there.
And if we're gonna talk about this in that, or we're gonna talk about it, that we need to have our sewer rate higher than our water rates. And that we've been completely opposite this entire time.
How would that ever happen?
I mean, I got a few guesses.
I'm sure.
Just gonna say it.
But I mean, this, I mean, and to your point, I mean, like you said, it's completely opposite. They should, it should be higher. But we're under it, so why not just get even? We're gonna jump way over it next year, the next year when it gets another increase. I get it's only five dollars, but five dollars here, five dollars there, five dollars on, on whatever, ten dollars on your internet. Four hundred dollars on your yearly insurance for your home.
So if we don't do the five dollars now, how far behind are we going to be in twenty twenty-eight?
Oh, you're gonna be raising these every year.
Well, I don't think, but I mean, that's why we should just do it now. And maintain it.
We could either maintain or just go up little by little, let's be there. You know, but I think we need to rip the band-aid off now, get ahead of it now. And be able to adjust as needed, year over year, by looking at what's going on. Because I have a feeling that we're gonna go, let's just get to this, and then by twenty twenty-seven, we're going, uh-oh, uh-oh. And then everybody's gonna be running for reelection, 'cause it won't be me at that point, 'cause I raised it up again. We're gonna be doing the same thing. I'm talking about the same thing in two years. It's never gonna be a good conversation. It's just not. But unfortunately, it is an absolute need. It's not a want.
This is the, the part of the job that gets tough.
Yeah. If we were running a business, we're gonna run a business to ensure that we are there for the next year, and the next year, and the next year. So we have jobs, and the jobs are people living in this town.
I'm not denying that it sucks. And it's gonna be hard. But I think no matter what, you have your consensus on this. So I, I love seeing my argument change anybody's mind in the room, but it's gonna happen and needs to happen now. We, we can't continue to play that up.
So what's the consensus, the nine dollar base and six fifty-six unit?
Well, go on, seven forty-one or whatever that, whatever that rate is.
For the unit, seven forty-one and a, and then the nine dollars for base?
Nine dollars for the base will increase that, as we go, but getting to the.
Well, thank you. Okay. So we're right in the middle of the pack here with water basically. Um. And we, um, we're obviously tiered, as every time in the problem like it's here before, when the increase, uh, the only cities that stayed flat, I believe, on. And the Dallas, Illinois, and, yeah, thank you. So going back, so at a five percent, we'd be going to twelve sixty and six fifty-six. We could raise all the two dollars and twenty, that, that's where bills come in. Okay, so we're spending, we're expecting eight hundred thousand in expenditures. Um. So we'd be at thirteen twenty and six eighty-eight to just cover our expenditures. Well, that's maybe five thousand dollars. Just cover. Have a little push. A bear with. So that would be.
And you gotta cover your expenses. That, that just, just makes the other conversation, you know, a lot worse, but I, you have to cover your expenses. You can't.
We do an increase of ten, five percent, um, we'd be taking.
What was the loss last year on?
No, I do not. Um, I don't think it's had a principal last year. I'll be a couple of calls, and we all could do a, a look back. So with all of the increases that were just made, what does that have to do with health?
Again. We're tiered, we're tiered here. So.
Up to five thousand.
It's gonna change traction.
They are on the seven forty-one.
So you gotta remember, this town, if they have a second water meter. And they're watering their grass. That usage gets added together with the first, and that puts them into the tier rate. You understand what I'm saying?
It'll be the same if I just have one water meter and I'm watering my grass.
Well, not necessarily. I get tired of still doing that second one. But that water, it brings you into tier two, tier three.
So it'll be what, twenty-one dollars in point that's on, compared to the twenty-four, that is, on the five thousand. Twenty-one what? Twenty-one forty-five. Um, okay, we can, okay, I'm good with this. No problems? I think that's enough. Um, next discussion, LGA. I kind of need to know where you guys want to put it.
You, did you see that it's gonna stay the same for next year?
At like eight hundred and something dollars.
Yeah, whatever it was this year, it's coming with the exact same number here, that's what I got.
Well, it's seven thirty-four, eight eighty-eight this year, it's seven thirty-five, seven forty-one, and twenty-five this year. So this year, um, a hundred and forty thousand went to parking involvement. A hundred and thirty-six thousand went to capital. And the remainder, roughly four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, went to general. So I'm wondering if you wanna keep that. The same, do that hundred and forty thousand in the parks. Another number of capital, and the rest into general, or if you had other. With the hundred and forty thousand in parks, what was that? Well, this year covered parks.
Cover.
Yep. Um.
That was on the park and trail plan.
Yep. I'm not sure what's on there for twenty-five, of, along with the, the E and R grant trail. All one comment, right? So that, I mean, and we don't have to leave them on, so we can do them however you want. Hundred and forty thousand in parks. Yep, yep. So a hundred and forty in parks, one thirty-six in capital, and the remainder in general. Okay. What do you want to apply on that?
I'm just thinking about the eighty-two million dollars in same project. Or the three million that are hard kids.
Um, I think the next discussion was, we have to decide.
We will, we'll.
We need to discuss, um, streets.
Go back to the source.
Streets, and then we also have to relate to this to highly powered.
I'd rather talk streets.
So that's where we are at with this. Um, I threw a three hundred thousand dollar street, I'm throwing a number in here from a before, just to get something in there. I know there's, in the CIP plan, it's always scheduled for a hundred thousand per year. We all know that that's not gonna make it. It's not gonna work. Um, so based off of these numbers right now, I did kind of like a premium property tax value. So this is based on house valuation, hundred fifty-two, hundred, two fifty-three hundred. So we're looking, based on where we are right now, we're looking at a nine percent increase. So going from forty-four point one two to fifty-three point seven two. Um, and then you can see the increases. So a house of two hundred thousand would be going from eight hundred eighty-two to a thousand seventy-four. To give you an idea, this is just based on numbers right now, just to give you an idea, thanks on how much up.
What, uh, what did you use, what did you, uh? Tax that?
I estimated a, a fifteen percent increase from twenty-four. Was a conservative. I haven't heard anything from Tony yet.
Yeah, I think they spent it from like the last year, I think, the last, this is the.
Um, also, I digress after, these are all the cities in the right counties, and we're correct tax rates too right now. And where Montreal falls. Just to let you know, Coal Cato is looking at a twenty percent increase for twenty-five. Uh, there's a finance email going around right now with everybody responding about what their increases are at. So this is who I've heard back from. On this, and it's showing, so this is the rate of their increase that they're looking at for twenty-five, and then what that new rate would be. And then this is not all has applied yet.
Roll that over.
Yep. So. Coal Cato is gonna be, if the health even doesn't go up, Coal Cato will be at seventy-five. Just to give you an idea of what's going on right now. I don't think you need the facts, you already know. Um. So just wanna kind of give you some facts and kind of some gears where things are gonna be, just kind of make some numbers that we have right now. If you do appeal for it.
Do you think that three hundred thousand per street is your estimate, or do you think it's?
I think it's well.
Think it's well, but I, I think that's what I'm saying.
Thank you. Well, come in, uh, probably touch it, it's in one point eight.
Cause it holds a loan, for the mill over there, it's five hundred, six hundred thousand. Yeah. Um, real fast, budgets did.
Well, and we're gonna throw it, level the whole curve ball in there, but, um, we talked with Tammy Ondal from Northern Securities recently, and. The twenty-one bond is going through arbitrage reporting right now. So that three hundred and forty thousand that is sitting there unused right now, we should not touch until we know if we have to pay on it. So. Just pile it on there. So I'm working on getting the arbitrage stuff ready in the next two to three weeks, and talk with. The vendor that I've been in contact with through Tammy to get a figure, because people are beginning year three of, uh, the bond on September fourteenth. So they look at the first three years as a whole, and then year four is separate, and year five is separate. So they actually are coming in at a good time. Um, they just suggested don't touch that money right now until we know. Um, I did talk to Mark from Becker, who just went through arbitrage a couple of months ago, and they ended up having a hand on that. On that, on their bond in particular. So I'm not saying what I have to, I'm not saying I'm not gonna have to. We have to see what happens. You said it's gonna do with how fast we spend the bond. It's how fast we spend the bond proceeds, but also how much money we're making off the bond. So if we're not spending the bond down and we're holding. The bond proceeds in our account and making interest on that, we're making more than what we're. Does that make sense?
Yep.
It's hard to explain. So the only good thing on our part is that in twenty-one and twenty-two, rates were crap. So really, there wasn't, I think when I looked at the twenty-one, um, interest rates on the checking note, it was like twenty zero three percent. So, and the net worth after that. So we're hoping for the first two years until rates start to rebound, that hopefully that negative will come fixed positive. But just so you know where that is at. So back to streets. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Um. So like I said, a hundred thousand is what is in the capital improvement plan. I think we're all aware that it's not gonna make it. Um, three hundred thousand, not knowing exactly what's coming down the line, I think it's well. I, I don't know that we're gonna have, we have to start building up the case. And we just, like you said, it's worth the band-aid. And we just kind of get it up there.
Right, where, where do you, what do you think it means to be?
Five hundred?
No, it's kind of what I was thinking.
I think that would give us a good jump start, and not saying that we're gonna use five hundred thousand every year. We don't pay it, let's save them a little bit a year. But I think it's gonna give us a start for.
Well, we're still partying high on things, that's not a problem. We are gonna use it every year.
For now, yeah.
We were supposed to be alternating, we've seen like, uh, more expensive projects, and then like, crack building, steel coatings, that's kind of been. We've been all over the place, kind of construction schedules, and how long the downtown projects, so. So that stuff just got. Out of order, so. So also with the highway lighting project, we need to decide where that's coming out of. Um, Montreal's cost for the lighting will be up basically a hundred and forty-four thousand. So it's gonna wait till now, it's all the way. Pick that up.
What their power's up.
I'm, I mean, five hundred is fine, I just, I make one look at the budget as a whole. Again, I, I get that there's gonna have to be some increases that are gonna have to, have to happen, but. Now you hit somebody with. Hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty dollar more increase in taxes, and. Two hundred and sixty dollar increase in bills to the city on top of that, and, I mean. We're stretching, like, a lot of people too thin, when, when the state certainly isn't gonna look after us and just keep increasing taxes and.
Yeah, but the city as a whole is stretching itself, and, too. I, I, holy, I get what you're saying. It's, again, it's stocks that affects all of us, but. I think it's, at some point.
What is the last time taxes have been raised in this town?
Well, so. So. The green in our tax rate. So basically, since two thousand nineteen, we've gone down. We were fifty-six percent in two thousand nineteen, and every year, we have a decrease. Four, over here, one, two, three, four, five years. And now. We need to like. Yeah, sorry, did you have?
I just can't. I have a glare from one light.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna see my.
I was told the morning I didn't see it like that.
My fault, I told you that.
That was without getting number one.
So it's down every year except for twenty-two.
Thank you, with a twenty-year.
I think we've done a great job during a time when everything has gone up around us, to keep it from hitting, you know, the, the citizens of this town. But I think we've also come to a point of, we need to look at what's going on, and. Hopefully. The county can look at what they've been doing the last few years, when they get some fresh flood in there. As to what they've been doing to all these small towns within.
I know that, um, we said no in the past, but. Do we have an option for the, to use that, to implement the half-cent sale tax in Montreal?
You have to look into it. I don't know what it all entails.
If you do, it's gonna take you like two to three years to get it accomplished.
Right, but. But, I mean, they're not gonna want us, but. People might dread about the, and I'm not. This is a completely different kind of vision than that, but half-cent, you know, most people aren't gonna notice it, and it will only affect, you know, ten, fifteen businesses in town that have sale tax, but. Um. That money, most of that money's gonna come from people that don't with the Montreal. Cause Casey's is the stopping point for a lot of people that don't wanna pay gas and down low. I, I think it's something that we look at, and, cause the counties use that for, what, five? I, I think it's something that we look at, and, cause the counties use that for, what, five or six years? And they get eight or nine million dollars a year from the half, and obviously, we wouldn't get anywhere near that. But the county gets eight or nine million dollars a year from that, and I've been told that that is almost eighty percent from out of the county.
So if there's another side of that ball, like, you doer companies from coming in here. Why wouldn't I build weirdly, very low tax rate also?
They, they, it would have no effect on the business.
Yeah, it doesn't affect the business, it's.
Right, but you're trying to self profit.
A half, a half percent, I mean, if you're talking.
I, I have no, I have no issues with going and starting that off, and obviously, again, to your point, Kevin, it's gonna be a good for you if it happens, but might as well start that process now. Still doesn't get us to where we need to.
I know, but.
But, but I, I don't, I don't disagree that we should, yeah, absolutely go that route. Yeah, hundred percent, I don't disagree.
Not really looking at.
Because once twenty twenty-ten's in, grow again, and look at businesses, small can't stop, that, that will be something, it will be a kind of a change.
No, that's a highway and streets.
Street lights.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, we want that money. Where do you wanna keep it at all? Just still ready?
Yeah, okay.
So I think it's five hundred on the street, right?
I don't see why we don't.
I mean, no matter what we, if, if we put this in our preliminary budget, you know.
We gotta go down, we gotta go down, as a relic, that's high.
Exactly.
Would you wanna take that hundred and forty thousand?
What my magic monitor.
You have one of those?
I wish. We add them on the top and show it, and it's like a profound score. That's how we pass.
It's already voted on, you think? You need to put the power to them, so. Put it voted on already, done deal.
So, well, this.
That's a wonderful.
This has twenty-five, so this is one thing to do. This is gonna bring us all down. So you need to sparkle and reflect the happiness. So.
More things for people to distract them on as well.
Well, when I get more distracted by, I mean, I would. I'm not sure when it comes. Um. No, I was kinda thinking if this was all with the streets and street capital, um, probably the fire capital, yeah, that's picking up.
Let's talk about one. Let's talk OSHA.
Oh, yeah, that pass, I think.
We don't know for a while yet, but.
Unless you wanna, unless you wanna put a little more of the LGA towards capital.
Here we go.
And shift that around a little more.
We have a hundred and forty thousand going to parks. From the LGA?
Right. You could just increase their budget. We could slightly decrease parks, like a hundred, and increase our capital.
How much do the woodchips cost for a winner?
We haven't got to do it yet.
What do you expect?
Don't know. We haven't got to do it yet.
No, I've begun in the past.
You got to do that company.
We've inspired them that long.
Kinda.
What did you pay in the past?
Six grand. For EBE compliant woodchips. That's exactly what they gotta be.
Yep.
Never heard of such a thing, they exist. And you pay more for them.
So there's a lot of new playgrounds going to the pebble flex now.
Rubber, yeah, but then that, also there's gives and takes with that stuff too, very expensive, and it it spreads through your entire park and never goes.
No, the pebble flex is the hard.
Yeah, the surface, I think that's what's going on at school, right? Right over here?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, we done them all the way down through true base this time, we didn't screw around, so there's a lot of woodchips in there.
Yeah, those, those big holes there already.
Yes, and there are.
You're talking about the woodchips though.
So we're talking a hundred and forty-four on the lighting. Hear me out, so if we just drop parks to a hundred thousand, capital goes up to a hundred and seventy-six. We're covering the lighting, and we've got thirty thousand in extra, or whatever else. I'm not sure.
I just think there's, there's so much stuff that, there's, you know, the thirteen, fourteen parks that need to be just maintained. There's a couple that don't have equipment, that they're trying to get equipment in order next few years.
And that's not cheap.
And I don't know what's scheduled, I mean, is a hundred thousand?
Forty grand gonna make or break a park next year.
I don't think, I don't think you could put a playground set up for a hundred thousand.
I'm not saying, yeah, but.
Have a good twenty grand.
Well, if Donald's willing to give us another one again, I don't know, but it still costs us like sixty, eighty thousand, and that was free. Get concrete work and everything, so.
Do we know what is slated for next year?
I don't really, I, I have that rough draft, I kinda love that, I mean, I know there are big pushes in the connecting more trails. And that would require land acquisition and hiring, like, a hundred thousand won't touch it.
We're gonna have to do the, so much inventory, I would want that great money, otherwise, that has to be done next year.
Yeah.
It has to be done, done, all projects be done by, you know, twenty twenty-six, so basically, that'll happen next year.
Next year, otherwise you're going to grab money. Yeah. And again, let's go back to. You know, Gucci on Walmart prices, that's just all, let's do it. Even Target, I have a Target price that'd be up there. Um. Tough pill to swallow when you look at a picture of the hole, you know, a giant game, I've been saying it since I've been, I'm just being honest with you, since I got into the public works director's spot, it's a giant game of catch-up. Giant game of catch-up for our budgets.
We also have to pay for the streetlights because that matters to happiness.
And I love parks and trails and their plan, but sometimes plans don't get done.
Well, a lot of stuff in the parks is on.
Correct.
It's the easiest place that we can get financial.
But if it's there, I mean, we can use that money for the light anyway, couldn't we? Because those are all connecting to trails. Highway twelve connects to the trail, that's downtown, it'll connect to the trail in Cometa. If we don't have it somewhere else, we can use it out of there, right?
We'll use it out of the park fund?
It's parks and trails, so it connects to the trail. It, I just, I wouldn't wanna, I mean, if there's somewhere else you can find it, but, and we're talking for next years.
Yeah, we'll definitely build some right now.
How much is this trail plan from my opinion?
I don't have it with me, um, maybe more than a hundred and some grand. Even our matching parts.
So should we put all the, rest of the remaining LGA into general, or should we put them into parks so we can do that project?
Put it all in general, you know, you said hard to come.
Right, too.
You can move it around, put it all in general fund.
We don't have the debt limit.
Right.
I think it's just. That's all in general? No, we have part of that, right?
All of them.
So, yeah, all seven hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Let's make it clear, you can kick it into parks and the.
Yeah, cause when you do the levy, the services would have to go into the county. Basically, right now, we just have it broken out. For LGA. I don't, also do we do it like this, and we can? Like you said, the trail is parks. Lights are streets. Or, I mean, you bump those two, and you keep the general down a little bit.
And we really do do anything that we have the flexibility to do it all.
I, I don't think so. I don't know how the county looks at the certified amount. They, you know, let's say we pump, you know, seven hundred and thirty-five. Seven hundred and one in here, we're certifying seven hundred and fifty thousand for a general fund. I don't know how the county looks at that, or what they if they check, so I don't know on their end what they do with these numbers. I just know that we end up paying all over the end. So again, I could check in with the county on that portion and see.
Yeah, maybe we'll do that.
Yeah, I can get certified with them first.
Yep.
So if they say it doesn't matter, do whatever you want, at all, in general. But I can, should be okay with it. I don't think I have anything else. Apologize for difficult decisions. I think that was really the last little thing, and we need to bottom this up. I appreciate it, thank you.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. All fair, all right, if I, motion passes, four zero, we are here.